Before we get started, we have three items that we needed to address right off the bat. We have three public hearings. Public hearing number one, proposed rate increases for sewer service within and outside the corporate limits of the City of Warrenton, a political subdivision. Mr. Greville wants to address that?
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. The first public hearing presented on behalf of the city is a rate increase for sewer services for the City of Warrenton, Missouri. It's a 3% rate increase. For purposes of the public hearing record, I would ask that copy of the ordinances be made a part of the record by reference, and also a copy of the notice of public hearing that was published in the paper notifying the public of tonight's public hearing related to the sewer increase. Beyond that, I don't have nothing further on behalf of the city unless you guys have questions.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address that topic? If not, I'll close that public hearing and will open public hearing number two, proposed rate increase for the use and consumption of water within and outside the corporate city limits of the City of Warrenton, Missouri, a political subdivision.
Once again, Board of Aldermen and Mayor, this is a notice of public hearing for water rate increase. It is also a 3% increase in water rates. I would ask by reference a copy of the ordinances of the City of Warrenton be made a part of tonight's public hearing record, and also a copy of the notice of public hearing be made a part of the record by reference for the public hearing tonight.
Anyone want to address or comment on that topic? My third topic for the public hearing is an amendment to Section 425 sign regulation. Anyone care to address any of those issues? Mr. Dyer.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. We have a proposed amendment to Chapter 425 sign regulations. The proposed amendment is to revise our existing code to be in compliance with recent Circuit Court rulings regarding sign regulations. You can no longer regulate signs based on content. As part of the public hearing record, I'd like to have the municipal code by reference, copy of my public hearing notice, and my planning and zoning report included.
Thank you, Jay.
You're welcome, sir.
Anyone have any comments or want to address those issues? If not, the public hearing session is now closed. At this time, I'd like to open up the City of Warrenton Board of Aldermen meeting on Tuesday, September 18th, 2012. On my agenda, before we get started, I do want to cross out item number eight on the approval to hire Daniel Young. That person has rejected our offer, so that job will remain unfilled at the present time. So, we usually start a meeting off with a pledge of allegiance. Would everyone stand and face the flag, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes, the regular board meeting minutes from September 4, 2012.
Make motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from September 4, 2012.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Kendall to approve the regular board meeting minutes from September 4, 2012. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dyer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Abstain, I was absent.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with one abstention. Item 3B, executive minutes from August 21st, 2012.
Make a motion, we approve the executive minutes from August 21st, 2012.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the executive minutes from August 21st, 2012. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absent. Executive minutes from special meeting on August 28th, 2012.
I'll make a motion, we approve the executive minutes from the special meeting on August 28th, 2012.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the executive minutes from the special meeting on August 28th, 2012. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Abstain, I was absent.
Alderman Clark?
Abstain, I was absent.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried three to zero with two abstentions. Item 3D, special meeting from September 11th, 2012, on discussion of recreational program.
Make a motion to approve the special meeting from September 11th, 2012, for discussion of recreation programs.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the special meeting on September 11th, 2012, on discussion of recreational programs. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kendall?
Abstain, I was absent.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Abstain, I was absent.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried three to zero with two abstentions, in one absence, I'm sorry. At this time, we usually give the public an opportunity to address the board, and if you come forward at this time and go to the podium, state your name, we ask you limit your remarks to five minutes or less.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, my name is Dale Abus, and I have just one question. I filed my grievance June 19th of 2012 with the city. It was in accordance with the timeframe stated in employee's handbook. Per the employee's handbook, I quote, "Within ten business days after receipt of the formal grievance and after receiving the facts pertaining up to the grievance, the HR manager shall provide a written response to the employee to file the grievance." It's now been two and a half months. As of today, neither I nor my attorney have received any written response. Would you please give me an expected date of a written response, so I may move forward in this matter? Thank you.
Counselor Greville, do you want to comment on that, or?
I'd prefer not to comment on it. We've received correspondence from his attorney with direct about the insurance company.
Did you hear what he said on that?
Actually, I did.
Okay. He said he preferred not to respond to you because he was dealing directly with your attorney.
As of June 3rd was the last response we have had, July 3rd was the last response the city attorney or my attorney have received.
Number one, it's inappropriate for us to have direct communication about the issue because Ms. Abus is represented by counsel, and he's made that abundantly clear by the letters we've received from his attorney. Secondly, we have referred this to the insurance company. I'm aware of the fact that their counsel has had correspondence with our insurance company. Beyond that, really, there's no position or statement for the city to make.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We're just asking for a date, an expected date.
And I can't give you that. Anyone else like to address the board? Sarah Johnson?
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to introduce you. We change editors every now and then. Sarah Johnson is the new editor for the, or should I say interim editor for the Warren County Record, and you're replacing Linda Gertz. Okay, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Board of Aldermen comments?
Anybody have anything you'd like to address the public or share with the public?
John?
No. Thank you. Not tonight.
Brad?
Jim?
I have a couple items that I wanted to share with the public. One item was a invitation to attend an Eagle Scout ceremony for one of our local young men. Jacob Logan Junker received his Eagle Scout Award on September 15th, 2012. On behalf of the city, I want to congratulate him for this precious honor. The other thank you card I have is one of our employees, and I want to read it to you. It's from Gabrielle Curry, our finance director. Says, "Mayor and Board, thank you for allowing me to utilize the tuition reimbursement program. I appreciate the support you have given me throughout this process. Thank you, Gabrielle Curry." We thank Gabrielle for finishing up her master's program in finance. That's all I have. Excuse me, the next item on the agenda is item seven, Warrenton TV, John Scott and April Meyer. I see April, but I don't see John.
John's not here.
Okay. Would you want to come forward so everybody can hear you, April?
Good evening. My name's April Meyer. I'm the program manager of E-Net Live and the program director of Warrenton TV. Warrenton TV is a new business that's in the area. We are broadcasting for the high school. We are doing right now football and their volleyball, they're girls. We broadcast them live over the Internet. If you guys could go to, if you go to wwwwarrentontv.com, that's where you can see everything. We are partnered with the Big Red Boosters, and the Big Red Boosters of the school, they get 50% of anything that we make through Warrenton TV, so it's going to go back to our schools. What we, as a business, are asking is for support of the city, and that's why we're here. So what we want is the local, Warrenton TV, to be the local home channel of Warrenton. We want to broadcast pretty much, we want to do the board meetings, we're going to do the school board meetings, and then we are going to start doing into education. They want to do some reverse school classroom where they do their homework in school, do their class at home. It's called Singapore Math, and so they're really excited about that. So what we're trying is get support by getting advertisers and building our, just building it for the community. Any questions?
I might mention to the board that I had the opportunity to meet with people and John, was that a couple, a week ago?
Yeah, about a week ago.
About a week ago. I found them to be very interesting, and of course, one of my questions then is, how are you all making your money?
Right.
Because you're, from what I'm hearing from you, you're offering a free service to like the city and the school board and so forth.
Right.
So where are you getting paid?
It's basically, we get 50% of the advertisers and subscriptions, and then the rest goes back to the school.
Okay. So if you televise our city board meetings, there may be some advertisement as people are watching that meeting and so forth?
Right, well, yeah. We have on our website, you either can do, we can, when we do it live and stuff, we do, we do it over the air. But then we also have like stagnant or rotational or sliders, which you don't just slide across the screen when you're watching, because the Internet, everything you can click on. So I mean, your advertisers are getting a great, you know, sorry, I'm really, I'm sure you can tell. But, so, any other questions?
So you have local businesses advertising?
We are in the process of getting that. We've only been doing this for now three weeks, four weeks at the most, and stuff, and we've just done the football, and we've done volleyball, and all of it, we've done free, we're taking care of all of it right now. So just to build, and we're not doing any subscriptions yet, there will be subscriptions on the video, BODs, basically video on demand. We broadcast them live, and then we put them in the archives, and then you can go back and you can watch them.
Are your plans to make the City Warrenton's meetings available to people then?
Yes, 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 we want to do that.
Are you coming in and going to film the meetings, or are you going to use our tapes?
We were going to talk to you guys about that, using yours, you know, and we can just, we can broadcast that way. We could use some of ours, or we could use your guy.
What, I guess we just, earlier this year, started making our meetings available, certainly not live, but by the next day available through YouTube.
Okay.
Your thought process being to do that in addition to, or?
Right, you can do either way. One thing with YouTube, I mean, you have different advertisements, but we're doing will be local advertising, so it'd be only for your local people around. You could probably do whatever you guys think would be, but we would say probably, it's probably better just to go through us. I mean, everybody's supposed to, we want everybody to watch warrentontv.com.
So there'd be a lot of things on Warrenton TV?
Right, right, that's what we're building. We want to, we want to get into where people can broadcast their weddings if they want to. We want to, you know, get into all different avenues.
Do you ever foresee that you would be, or that there would be a charge for us being available on Warrenton TV?
No. Like I said, the way that we make our money is through advertising, and that's why we're coming to you and asking for support.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or concerns? Alderman Clark?
Counselor, any legal questions?
I mean, no. I mean, if they, there would be some logistical questions if they filmed it and broadcast it live, if delayed it or not, but I mean, they can put, anybody can broadcast if they purchase one of our discs. You know, how much do they cost for copies of it?
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty for each meeting, it would be. They could absolutely do it easily without any issues.
Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you, April.
Thank you.
Item number nine, Warren County Fair Association, Mr. Cobb.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess I got two in a row. The first one's number nine would be the Boy Scouts want to use the fairgrounds, but they've been doing it for several years. They stay out there on the 19th to the 21st. Seems to be pretty quiet deal, they keep the place cleaned up before they leave, so.
You say they've done it for the past two years?
They've done it for several years.
I mean, just like 10 and 11, 2010 and 2011?
Yeah, I know they've done it in 11, and I'm sure they've done it in 10 and 9, I think, I'm pretty sure. They was camping on there, or they was using it before I got on the board, that's all I know.
So they're camping, or?
Yeah, they, some of them camp, they do a, and then some of them drive back and forth from, I guess it's a whole big area. I don't know how big the area, you know, the region or what the Boy Scouts call it, I don't know, but they, there's several of them out there during the day, and then some of them stay, some of them don't.
Camp in tents or an RV?
Both.
Both?
Are the Boy Scouts that's using the fairgrounds, are they, are local Boy Scouts, or are they from a larger area?
Well, it's a larger area, Mayor. You know, I don't know what their region is, but they, you know, they come in here, it's a, I don't know what, I never was in the Boy Scouts. I don't know what they, you know, what they call it, but they all get together.
I mean, one of our, or a couple of issues, I mean, is the zoning regulation, that you all aren't zoned for overnight camping, so that's an issue with the board, and that hasn't been changed. I mean, you'd have to go through a lengthy process to change that, and the other issue is burning, campfires at night would not be permitted. So two issues with the board, right there. Do you understand those?
Yes.
That that's a problem for us? And the only way I can see to remedy the deal would be to start the zoning process over, where we could have the public hearings and see if there's any public that object to them and rewrite the ordinances that might allow that. You know, you're talking about a couple of months to get that done. So I think that's going to be an issue with the board, so.
So we need to get a hold of the Boy Scout guy.
Does anyone else want to comment on that?
Mayor, if I could, Mr. Cobb, is it like a campery where they have activities during the day?
Yes, activities or meetings.
And that's really the focus of it, is the meetings and activities during the day?
Right, right.
The event absolutely can occur as a daily event, but as we talked about on August 7th, when, you know, when we worked with the previous fair board about the overnight camping, they didn't want overnight camping out there. It doesn't, the zoning ordinance right now doesn't allow the overnight camping, so, I mean, the events, the important part of the events, the events during the day is allowed, and the RV camping is allowed overnight, but the overnight tent camping, that's what we worked out with the previous when we rewrote that ordinance, you know, to meet some of the needs of the fair board, is not allowed, okay? So I just want to make sure that's clear, you know, Mayor, you know.
If they had the RV, they could stay in there.
Right, and they can still do their scouting event during the day. They absolutely can have those activities, it's just the after midnight burning, which is a citywide, and then on that particular zoning area, no overnight tent camping.
Is it after, you said after midnight burning?
No.
Or is it after dusk?
After dusk, yeah, I think is what it is, right, dusk.
Okay. So you follow what we're saying there?
Yes, I got you.
Okay.
Would they need our, if they weren't going to do camping and they weren't going to do campfires, would they need our permission to have this event?
No.
I'm sorry?
No. I mean, if it was just during the day, it wouldn't work, I mean, that was the point of it, is we wouldn't have to apply, I mean, for the special noise permit, which, you know, you guys have.
Put that out there. I wouldn't say it'd be noisy, but.
Right, well, it was put on for a noise permit for October 19th, through, Mayor.
It's better to have that.
Be safe than sorry.
Right.
I mean, that's the way we looked at it, anyway.
So I think you're good to go on your Boy Scout event minus the tent camping and campfires.
And campfires after dusk.
After dusk.
Yeah. I got that ruled out.
All right, item number 10. We got Jim again on request for exemption for time constraint for loud and unusual noises services, and item 10A is benefit dance.
I'd say all those should be done before, probably before 11, but you know, it's just, we put on precaution wise, is the only reason all three of them's on there.
Well, we're going to do these one at a time. So benefit dance that's going to go on until 12:00, so we need a noise disturbance waiver on there. Any board members have any comment? I'll entertain a motion on that one.
So who?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the loud and unusual noise disturbance for the benefit dance on September 22nd until 12:00 a.m. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absent, so that one's good to go on. Item 10B, Mid-Missouri Best, October 13th until 12:00 a.m. You're going to have to explain to us what Mid-Missouri Best.
That is church organizations with motorcycle clubs is what that is, and they're going to be there that day, and they're being, they're saying they should be done before 10, but it's another one of those deals that they're safe to be, sorry.
So it's a church organization?
Yeah, several church organizations. They're parishioners with motorcycles.
Motocross.
No, no, no motocross, it's motorcycle.
No racing or motocross or anything like that?
So just motorcycles?
Right.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
There's no, no.
Races or?
No.
Sorry, thank you.
Now, my understanding was that they do do a, I don't know, 30 or 40 mile ride, I don't know where they go, but, and then they come back there and they.
My understanding is that, I believe, one of your members, Chris Petros, has been in contact, or maybe it was you that's been in contact with Mr. Hamp and working out the details of that.
That was Chris.
Okay.
I was just, I'm just here for this.
Understood. And I believe that Mr. Hamp sent a letter to Chris outlining his understanding of the event and what he's going to include, and they kind of came to him and gave him on that.
So are you?
That's my understanding.
Are you requesting a noise variance for that, or?
Yeah, just in case, you know, they don't all get out of there, but, you know.
And there's no overnight?
No, no overnight, they're out.
Do you want to have any?
I'd make a motion to grant a request for exemption from the time constraint for loud or unusual noise disturbance on October 13th for the Mid-Missouri Bike Rally until 12:00 a.m.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the exemption for time constraint for loud and unusual noise disturbances for the Mid-Missouri Best, October 13th until 12:00 a.m. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absent. The Boy Scout, I mean, really.
I would think that'd be pretty quiet.
I don't think you're going to need, I don't think you're going to need a noise factor as long as you understand about the tent camping.
Right, the tent camping, right, but I'd say the leaders would probably have them quiet by 11, I would think.
You know, and I say, at some point in time, we need to meet with the board again and your officers and sit down, and you need to tell us once more what you all want to do out there, so that you don't have to keep coming back and forth to this. We need to get this all ironed out, and, you know, we've had this discussion before about you all change board members and new boards come on, and all of a sudden, they want to go a different direction. We need to sit down with you and rewrite these ordinances and go through our zoning process and know exactly what you all want to do. I mean, it's not fair for you all to run back and forth.
Well, it's not fair for you all either.
No, no, we don't want to hear it all the time. That's true, that's true.
Well, you don't like me, huh?
No, but we think we're wasting your time.
No, I understand.
We're wasting our staff time.
Right.
We need to correct that problem somehow, and I know Counselor Greville said he'd be happy to donate some time to sit down with you all, and if you tell us.
Just call me when you want to do a meeting, and I'll call the officers.
Well, you call us.
And we'll put it together, all right, I'll call you.
You call us, and you tell us when you, when you can get to us through your board members together.
I'll get, I'll get all the officers together.
Okay.
And I'll get that put together.
Okay, is that all you have, Jim?
That's all I, that's all I got.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My next item is Terry Thorne, Director of Operations and Finance Office.
My question I have for you under operational updates this evening is just informational. You should have had at your desk when you arrived tonight, an invitation to the Wendy's opening on September 24th. It is an event where they've provided invitations to certain officials for that, and then they are opening for the public on the 25th of September. So coming very quickly, the new Wendy's store will be open, which there's a lot of people who have been asking, so wanted to put that out there publicly. Unless there's questions, my next item is just informational as well in regard to the recreational work session that was held on September 11th. In your packet, you should have found a summary of the concerns and issues that were brought up during that work session. We created this list of those issues and concerns, talked with the recreational staff down. downstairs, and it was interesting to find that probably 99% of what the concerns were, were things that were very easily resolved. In fact, we've had the ability to go through, take a look at those with recreational staff, and be able to put in place a resolution to the majority of the questions. Probably the biggest remaining question that has not been addressed is the parking on Lot A issue. We did look, Melody spent a great deal of time trying to actually find the plans for out there that were originally worked on, because we wanted to see if there's the ability adjacent to Lot A to increase the size of that lot. And what we found is that there is not. It looks like there's a lot of land area there, but in actuality, a good portion of that is the detention area for stormwater, so, we really can't put gravel and parking in the stormwater detention area. I'm not sure what the answer is to the parking dilemma, but we were hopeful that there would be some land area there, but it doesn't appear that there's much at all still available. I asked the recreation staff to take a look at it last Saturday morning, maybe take some pictures of all three lots and see what it looked like, and I haven't gotten a response back from that yet, so I need to get downstairs and look at that, but I think the parking is going to be the most difficult issue to resolve.
So, Lot A is that first lot, when you come down Hickory Lake Road, first lot on the right, and we don't know what those other lots are filling up also?
In talking to the staff, what they indicated is that Lot A would be overflowing, but the other two lots would be maybe half full, if that's full, but it's further to walk.
Longer.
It's a longer walk if you park in those other areas, so, everyone obviously wants to park at the closest area, and then when you've got one game underway and the people arriving for the second game, that's when the lot becomes overflowing. So, I don't know that there's a good resolution, honestly, to solving the parking dilemma.
Might we suggest that the children playing in those upper fields there by that parking lot, maybe just suggest that the parents and children attending those games, playing on those fields, park there, and then suggest that the others park in the lower parking lots?
I think that's already been done.
As for the lower fields?
I think that has been the suggestion, but I'm not sure that's resolved, making the suggestion has resolved the issue.
You know, this is just my personal opinion, which doesn't mean much to maybe a lot of people, but in this day and age, walking an extra 500 yards wouldn't hurt any of us. Just an observation.
True.
You know what I'm saying, I mean, it wouldn't hurt any of us to walk a little further.
It would, the grandmother, who I would estimate to be in her 70s, that called me and said, you know, I was going to look at my granddaughter play soccer, I parked on the grass because there was no way that I can park over there and make it all the way back over here, and she received a parking ticket for it, and I understand it's a...
Maybe then we need to look at, is she handicapped by...
No, no, she's not handicapped, she's just saying that is more of a walk than I can make carrying a lawn chair in my 70s.
And was she going to the fields by Parking Lot A?
Yeah, that's where I...
But then parked down on the other gravel lot?
No, she parked in the grass.
By A?
By A, correct, because she said if she parked in B, that's just more of a hike. I mean, it's definitely a problem. Is it possible to have Brad or somebody, I understand that we may not want to or be able to improve, put gravel in to extend the parking areas, but is it possible to rope off an area that, you know, allows people to park in some grass without damaging areas that we can't have them in the retention pond or parking dock?
I think they could certainly take a look at that. Brad's on vacation this week, so I didn't get an opportunity to really discuss it with him before he left.
But then, John, your grandmother's not guaranteed to get that spot, you know what I'm saying? It's a hard thing to...
My mom had to walk from her house when they had the lagoon field, she walked from her house up on Clara down there, so, I mean, she's that old, too.
She's been blessed with better health than the, she's been blessed with better health than the woman that I spoke with.
Yeah, it's not an easy solution, unfortunately.
And that's hard to say.
You know, parking on the grass is fine as long as it's dry, but when we start getting rain and muddy, then you got another issue there, too, so...
Yeah, like I say, most of the things were easily solved issues, we were able to put something in place, but that parking dilemma is going to be the most difficult resolution. So, wanted you to have a list of those, to see what the options were for solving those problems, and be able to refer back to that. We've had some calls to the Recreation Department wondering if there was going to be another meeting, and what we've told people there is that, yes, there sounded like there was a plan to do that, and perhaps that would be after a new Recreation Director was in place, who could then hear firsthand some of those comments, so...
Might that have been people that were unable to make the other meeting, or, because I know attendance was low, I personally wasn't there, but attendance was low?
I don't think the staff asked, you know, were you unable to attend, or what, just said, yes, we'll make sure that the information gets out to the public when another meeting is scheduled, but that there's not a scheduled date at this time.
So, hopefully, we can do that, we talked during the meeting about maybe doing it after the soccer season is over, because a lot of people that may have wanted to attend had soccer practice at that time.
Right, right. Did we have that in the newspaper, that we were having that meeting? I don't...
No, that's the one that the letters were sent out to, all the participants.
The letters, right, right, right.
But no, I don't believe that there was an added paper.
A lot of competition at night for school activities, and you're always going to be going with that.
Right, right.
And we had, the people that were here had good comments, legitimate concerns and so forth. I wish all of our problems could be fixed this quick. I was a little amazed, but, you know, two days later, 90% of them's already fixed. That's great.
We like it when it's that easy.
Yes, we do.
The next item I have for you is going to be a challenge for me. Brad's on vacation, so, I have for you the East Side Electrical Conduit bid tabs. This is the capital project to put the electricity down to the area on the east side where the new restrooms and pavilion are slated to be, and if you remember, you approved for Amarin to run the electrical down there, but our component of that was to put the conduit in the ground for them to run the electrical cable through. They did bid out the conduit and sweeps, and Brad's recommendation is to go with the low bidder, who is Butler Supply, for a total of $1,064.08.
We need a motion to approve that bid?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, second by Alderman Clark to approve the low bid on the Athletic Complex East Side Electrical Conduit for Butler Supply in the amount of Roll call, vote please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absent.
That's all I have for you this evening.
That's it. I've got Chief Howtishell, monthly report.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I do have my monthly report from August for you. Nothing really extraordinary there. Obviously, the detectives and a big number of the department were involved in the two major cases that we had in August, the Andrew L. case and the Figaro-Lamo case. I do want to commend Officer Kaiser, who was sort of pulled into the major case call out for Andrew L. as the evidence officer, something that was kind of out of his comfort zone, but he stepped up to the plate and handled over 100 pieces of evidence in a 36-hour period very professionally, so, it was a pretty big accomplishment, actually. Any questions about...
You change your format here, you have the calls for service by call type, is that something new, or have you always had that?
That's something that we added last month.
Last month, I like that, that helps me a little bit, too. Appreciate that. Any other questions for the chief?
Chief, do you have a dollar amount on the major case call out as far as fuel and meals, and do you track those separately?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I know we were, we had like a $450 food bill, and I'm not real sure what the fuel bill is, but I can certainly get that for you.
Thank you.
Is that something, is that, we bear all of that expense, or...
Right. You know, the whole idea of the Major Case Squad is to get a lot of officers in the area very quickly to start following up those leads, you know, everybody's seen the 48-Hour Show, and, you know, the more manpower you can throw at something like that in that first 48 hours, the better. So, we're responsible for food and fuel and making sure they have a good place to work, and they take care of the rest. You know, it works both ways, if somebody else has a call out, we send an officer, you know, it's just manpower sharing, is really what it is, and it's something that started 40 years ago, I think, in St. Louis, kind of the brainchild of Chief Lowry back there, that has kind of taken over across the country, that model.
So, for the month of August, you only had two ride-alongs?
Right.
And those applications are still available?
They absolutely are.
Through your department?
Yep, I love to see people coming out and riding.
That can be day or night, right?
Absolutely.
And how far in advance do you need an application?
Just a couple of days.
Couple of days.
Thank you.
And the other thing that I have, at the last meeting, we talked about the parking in front of the post office. I did a couple of sort of spot checks, an hour apiece, did three of them, actually, two of them sort of random, and one at what I think or perceive as the sort of the top traffic time, and that's during the school out time in the afternoon. I looked specifically at westbound traffic, because that's really what we're talking about being affected here. In those three hours, I counted 921 vehicles westbound from Highway 47. Of that 921, 14.5% actually had business at the post office. I was amazed at how many people come down Main Street just to go to the post office. And then I broke those down as well, about half of those people actually parked on the hardtop, about 43%, 44% was just male drop-off, say, ran through the drop-off lane, 4.5% parked on the gravel, and right around 2.25% actually parked in front. In every case where somebody parked in front on the street, though, there was a parking spot available on the hardtop. There was actually one close call where somebody really wasn't paying attention, and they had to make an evasive, or take evasive action before striking one of the vehicles that was in there, but that was pretty amazing, since I only saw a total of three vehicles parked there in those three hours, and there was one, so that's 30%, again, that's certainly not scientific, but, you know, it's more than coincidental, right?
So, based on your observations, those two spots don't really make that...
I think that the percentage of people that are using those is so small that eliminating those is not going to have a huge impact. And I think from a safety standpoint, there was a couple other things. The one vehicle that parked there on September 10th was actually more standing there, it was a FedEx truck, and he was there fully for 20 minutes of that hour that I was there, sitting there waiting for something, I don't know why, and that caused another problem with people coming off of Troy Road onto Main Street with the sight distance. They couldn't see, they couldn't see past the FedEx truck. And then, you know, the last thing, again, from the safety standpoint, is when there were vehicles parked in front, everybody westbound came across the center line and go past it, you know, give them a wide berth and to put them in the opposing lane, so, I think my overwhelming opinion is to remove those parking spaces.
Ironically enough, I received two phone calls since I was here last about parking in front of the post office, and negative phone calls, that they've almost seen several accidents, and they just don't feel it's as safe. And they even commented how when they come down Main Street, going west especially at lunchtime per se, how the larger trucks are parked, you know, out beyond the yellow line, and it's dangerous going down through there.
So, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation would be to make that no parking and no standing. I think we need to be specific about that after seeing a FedEx truck.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions on that? So, we're going to move forward, and do we need a motion or an ordinance or anything that...
We'll get an ordinance ready for next meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
I've got item 13, Planning and Zoning Director, Jack Kim.
Once again, it's the proposed amendment to Chapter 425 sign regulations to revise our existing code to be in compliance with recent Circuit Court rulings regarding sign regulations. In your packet, I have a printout of the existing code with all proposed items to be deleted, shown in red, and then all items in dark blue will be items that have been moved or revised, and then in light blue is the revisions. And then also in your packet, I have the proposed new sign regulation chapter, and I provided a printout with description and pictures of the proposed signs for the new ordinance, and this passed six to zero with four absent at the September 6, 2012 P&amp;Z meeting.
Essentially, it eliminates content regulation. We had a lot of content regulation in our ordinances. We had really gone away from the content regulation in our ordinances with, over the last five or six years, we revised the code, but the A Circuit Court of Appeals came down and said, you can't have any content regulation, which was a deviation from the case law before. So, this basically, you know, eliminate, basically it does eliminate it. A lot of cities are struggling to try to figure out how to deal with removing content regulations, but fortunately, we had already started going in that direction five or six years ago, so, it's kind of a natural transition from where we were before.
The, Jack, the portion that had the photographs?
Yes, sir.
How would this amendment affect those signs that are already pre-existing, that would, I guess, at that point be prohibited?
Well, I mean, obviously, if they were legal prior to the change, it would be a legal non-conforming use of, or otherwise known as a grandfather. That would extinguish upon discontinuation of the occupancy of the building or discontinuation of the maintenance of the sign. So, there's no question we're going to create some foreseen and unforeseen grandfathered signs, however, you know, it's got to be in compliance with the law, you know, the A Circuit Court of Appeals, and we probably are one of the first cities to bring our ordinance in compliance with the case law.
And I understand, my only concern or thought was, the ones that are pictured here that are noted as being prohibited, that have been there for 30 years, there's nothing that's going to make them remove those signs?
No, not at all. I mean, they'll have a legal non-conforming use of that sign, and that's part of why Jack has been out there, number one, is to give you samples of it, but also to see what... It's easy to talk in theory and read something in writing and say, this is what we're going to change, but to give you guys an idea of what really we have out there within the community.
They actually did that work pretty quick, considering...
The signs?
Yeah, the amendments worked through that, that's a lot of amendments to go through and a lot of changes.
Mr. Dickey, who's on Planning and Zoning, was a part of that, and it was not easy work, I mean, it's tedious going through it and trying to think of every possible sign, and we split it up into two or three sessions. sign, and we split it up into two, or three sessions, two?
Three.
Three, so we could think about it and then go out in the community and kind of see what we're really dealing with, and, yeah, I think they did a really nice job, and Jack did a really nice job with the presentation on it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Anything else?
No, sir.
We're moving on to Public Works Director, Guy Givers.
Good morning, Mayor and Board. Good evening. Glad you could get the July 2012 monthly report. We flushed 13,800 feet sewer lines, engraved six manholes, encambered 830 feet of sewer mains, and we had five water leaks.
How's our wells holding up? Doing good?
What is, Guy, on your, the front page of your wastewater treatment plant report?
Yes, sir.
At the bottom, H, I guess, RAS pit, back truck sucked up debris. What is the RAS pit?
That's the return activated sludge.
Okay.
We just use the back truck to clean out the hair and anything that builds up in there.
Geez, I could, I didn't want that much to scare me.
I got to clean.
Man, that's, you're always waiting to stop asking questions. Wow.
You're dealing with that one?
Guy, are cash pumps, are they still not in working order?
They're on.
They're on?
They're on.
Okay.
They're down.
All right, yeah, see that.
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll take it, right?
I think they buy water at other places cheaper, is the issue, and that's fine.
Yeah. Thank you, Guy.
And then, I'd like to have approval for preliminary engineering on Highway 47.
What is that?
That'd be the sidewalk.
What section, 47?
It's south toward, what, Warrior Ridge, down to...
Dry Fork.
Dry Fork.
Isn't that the one that the school has indicated a willingness to cost share?
And then, working with MoDOT, see what we have on, right away on MoDOT. I'd like to move forward with that.
If you have any clue what the engineering cost might be on that?
No, sir, I do not.
Pardon me?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay.
Is the, is the school interested in splitting the engineering costs also?
Well, I think where we are is, there's some potential grants possible for this. We have to have the preliminary engineering done before we know what the project is going to cost, so this request, as I understand it, is just to start that process of looking at engineers, and then we would bring a contract back to you for approval of the actual agreement, but we need approval to start working on the capital project, and that's what this is.
Do you have an estimate on the cost of that?
No idea. Until we talk to the engineers and go through the process of looking at qualifications, we won't know, but we will know that when we bring an agreement back for your approval.
We need a motion for that approval?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Flake, to give approval for preliminary engineering for Highway 47's sidewalk project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carried, five zero, one absent.
And then, next item I have, a request for two street signs to be installed between Clara and Lakeview for Deaf Child at Play.
Need a motion for that, Mayor?
Yeah, we do.
I'll make a motion to approve the installation of two street signs on Fourth Street that reference Deaf Child at Play.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Clark, for the approval of installation of two street signs on Fourth Street that reference Deaf Child at Play. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carried, five zero, one absent. Variable frequency drive. Sounds pretty technical.
It's the, with controls, the influence to the plants, pump it up the top of the hill. There's three pumps, and the variable frequency drive on one of the pumps is bad, and we need to replace it.
A big difference in bids, there, isn't there?
The one on the left is Van De Venter Engineering. They're the ones that installed all the equipment in the plant when it was originally built. The unit that's in it now is obsolete, and this is the replacement.
Mayor, you should have a new set of bid tabs that are up there, that show Durkin is no bid.
It's no bid.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's the one we should be looking at, no bid, the one, Durkin is no bid?
The one that came out in the original packet, Durkin bid.
Thank you.
So, the Van De Venter and the ECC is the only two bids?
That's correct.
Are they been the same piece of equipment?
ECC is using the original equipment that's in there, and the letter that I got from him, there was five left in the country. He recommended us buying two of them, so we have one for parts, but after them, five are, right, after the five are gone, that's it. So, there's one that Van De Venter is going to install, is the replacement for that unit. So, that's the newer unit.
Which theoretically will still have parts available?
That's correct.
We don't have to buy a parts car to...
That's correct.
So, is that your recommendation?
Van De Venter Engineering.
I make a motion that we go with the low bidder of Van De Venter Engineering for $7,340. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Flake, to approve the low bid of Van De Venter Engineering in the amount of $7,340. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero, with one absent.
That's all I have.
What else, Guy?
That's all I have.
That's it?
That's it.
Mr. Daley, Building Commissioner.
Good evening. I have your August permit report, and a couple notables on there is your two single-family homes. One is a new one, and the other one, you'd be happy to note, is on 310 South Side.
Great.
I saw that one.
It's a bargain job.
Yeah, looks a lot better.
Oh, yes. And the other thing I have for you would be the property maintenance record for August. Just some corrections on here, not corrections, but updates. The first one that's in progress, that is completed, that pool is gone. The second one is still in process, I mean, that was still a 30-day notice, so we're still under a 30-day notice, and the landlord is in the eviction process, and he wants to pull out of there anyway, so... And then, the third in progress down there, that has been repaired last week, just about the day before the 30-day notice gave up. And that, that's all I have, sir.
Jim, when you have a violation, you try to make initial contact with the owners, or how do you do that?
If it's a rental property, I contact both, the tenant and the owner. The property owner is the responsible one.
Okay.
So, I have to go to find the property owner, and like cases with paddock fields, I have to, I have to contact the owner, I have to contact the owner of the trailer, and then I have to contact the tenant in some cases, so there might be three letters.
How many people involved?
I have to contact everybody that's involved with a particular property.
Okay. Any other questions for Jim? Is that all you have for the board?
Yes, sir.
On item sixteen, we got some bills to convert to ordinances.
I'll call...
I'm sorry, I was going to say, I'll call for first reading of Bill 46-12, or I need a motion to...
I'll call for the first reading of Bill number 46-12.
Second.
Alderman Kendall made the motion, Alderman Dryer seconding for first reading of Bill 46-12.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between Lewis and Beatty and the city of Borton, Missouri for engineering services on Pickney Street.
Call for second and final reading and passage of Bill number 46-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Clark, for second and final reading and passage of Bill 46-12.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between Lewis and Beatty and the city of Borton, Missouri for engineering services on Pickney Street.
We need to vote on these individually?
Yes, sir.
Okay, roll call, vote please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero, with one absent.
Call for the first reading of Bill number 47-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Clark, for first reading of Bill number 47-12.
An ordinance amending Chapter 425 sign regulations of the Municipal Code of the City of Borton, Missouri.
Call for second and final reading and passage of Bill number 47-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer, for second and final reading and passage of Bill number 47-12.
An ordinance amending Chapter 425 sign regulations of the Municipal Code of the City of Borton, Missouri.
Roll call, vote please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero, with one absent.
Call for the first reading of Bill number 48-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Clark, for first reading of Bill number 48-12.
An ordinance amending Section 700.120 of the Municipal Code of the City of Borton, Missouri, establishing rates for sewer service within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Borton.
Call for second and final reading and passage of Bill number 48-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer, for second and final reading and passage of Bill number 48-12.
An ordinance amending Section 700.120 of the Municipal Code of the City of Borton, Missouri, establishing rates for sewer service within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Borton.
Roll call, vote please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero, with one absent.
Call for the first reading of Bill number 49-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Clark, for first reading of Bill number 49-12.
An ordinance amending Section 705.210 of the Municipal Code of the City of Borton, Missouri, establishing rates for the use and consumption of water within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Borton.
Call for second and final reading and passage of Bill number 49-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer, for second and final reading and passage of Bill number 49-12.
An ordinance amending Section 705.210 of the Municipal Code of the City of Borton, Missouri, establishing rates for the use and consumption of water within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Borton.
Roll call, vote please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero, with one absent. If there be no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Clark, to adjourn. All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. We're adjourned.